I call this Coventry Town Council meeting to order. All new council members who are present, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our law.
Next is our audience or citizens portion. If you'd like to speak, go ahead to the podium. Give us your name and address, please.
I'm Leigh Braidenwisher, 61 Barbara Drive. I'm here tonight to get a few things off my chest. I was at the Board of Education meeting on Thursday night and was disgusted with the behavior that I witnessed in the audience by two of our town council members. To be fair, there were others in the audience too that were out of line. To be calling out names at someone while they are speaking is rude, disrespectful, and as two town council members, one of which, Mr. O'Brien, senior, that has been around for quite some time, quite frankly, you should simply know better. I did get up and speak on Thursday during the audience of citizens because I was not happy with the behavior that I witnessed. There were children in the room, and they had to witness terrible words coming out of your mouths and others. Grown adults threw a temper tantrum, yelling at Bill Oros in the middle of his speech, personally attacking him, and calling him different names. I, for one, think you owe those kids an apology for your behavior. To make matters worse, the nasty rhetoric that I witnessed later on that evening and the next day on Facebook by Coventry's Republican Town Committee, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm sure, pretty sure hiding behind that name is Matt O'Brien, Jr. What was happening and being said on Facebook was even worse than what I witnessed in person. And comments from people who also felt the same as me were very quickly being deleted by the admin of the page for the Republican Town Committee. So that gets more to why I'm here tonight. I am here because I'm going to stand here in front of you, not hiding behind a keyboard, face to face, so that you have to listen to me. And you cannot delete what I'm saying. Bill Oros is a man of integrity with years of working in education. He's been in education longer than some people in this room that have been on this earth. One of the comments you deleted almost immediately after being posted said in part, "Bill absolutely voted in the best interests of the board as a whole and the children," as he put "experience" before "party." I've seen on Facebook comments from people saying, after what they witnessed, they were going to leave the Republican Party, and I too thought of that, as I am a Republican. However, I'm not going to let a couple very loud, obnoxious voices that only speak for a few drive me away. I'm going to continue to stay in my party and vote my conscience regardless of that opinion should come down on either side of the left or the right. And when I hear vicious comments coming out of people's mouths that are only trying to divide our town instead of unite, I'm going to call you out on it. We are a town of approximately 12,000 people. We are considered a small town. Generally, I am proud to say that I live in Coventry. But what I witnessed over the past several months with this election cycle was nothing but sad. The things being said about our neighbors, your neighbors, has gotten so personal. What is the definition of civility? It's a formal politeness or courtesy in behavior or speech. I implore you to please bring back civility to this town of ours. It's going to start with the leaders of our political parties. It is not so much that you disagree with Bill, but the way you express yourselves online and in person that is so horrifying. We are all entitled to our opinions, but should be expressing them with civility. What does it accomplish posting Bill's email address on someone else's Facebook page that is not even associated with Coventry? All I can think of is that Matt O'Brien, Jr. is trying to further his extreme ideological philosophy and political aspirations beyond Coventry to a larger audience. You both owe Bill Oros an apology for the way you treated him. This is not about you disagreeing with him, it is about the way you interrupted him while speaking and later hid behind a keyboard using words such as traitor and betrayal, all while giving out his email address to people outside our town. I am hoping you saw the error in your ways, and that is why you deleted that post, but that did... But what did that accomplish to further move this town forward in a positive direction? I'm glad my kids were not there to witness that behavior the other night. I can tell you that if they were ever involved in a similar situation where they interrupted someone while speaking in a public forum, I would be marching them back there to apologize, and there would be severe consequences at home. But even my 11-year-old knows better than the two of you to behave like that. Adults are looked upon to be role models in children's lives, especially adults in positions of leadership. I can assure you, if both of my children are ever exposed to you, they will have real-life examples of how not to behave.
Hi, Peter DiPiolo, 82 Wall Street. Well, I'm happy to report on the Veterans Day race, which is also known as the Veterans Day Patriot Race, although some people may have been confused, but it's the same thing. This is, this was our fourth running of the event, and I just wanted to come here today to, first of all, thank and compliment everybody in the town. They did an exceptional job in the park, really, an outstanding job. This year, we had over 235 runners. We had a overflow crowd in the kids' run. I don't know, John, I think you said the parking lot was pretty full. We couldn't even save a spot for you, sorry about that. So it was a good problem to have. We had several hundred people in the park. We had over 200 volunteers to compliment all the runners. The American Legion had a canteen, which basically, they made Chilean hot dog in the lodge. Everything went very, very well. We're thankful that the weather was very cooperative, which helped last year. If you recall, we had rain, snow, sleet, and then a little sunshine at the end. This year, it was frosty 16 degrees first thing in the morning, but it warmed up very nice to be perfect day for running. So we had a great turnout, great cooperation with the police, fire department, park and recs, as well as DPW. So I want to thank you, John, for all the help that everyone in the town gave and everyone that was there. We only heard nothing but great compliments. So I wanted to pass that along, because sometimes I think we get caught up in all the other things that we want done or don't get done the way we want, but I'm happy to tell you that the Veterans Day race, it was year four. We'll see how we do next year, fingers crossed. So if we get the permits and it's approved, we'll probably at least go for one more year and see where we go. One last thing is I think I have in the past given you a couple of our medals. I ordered one extra, and I owe you one from last year, John. So I have for you, I have to talk to the microphone, I understand, last year's medal and this year's. For those of you guys who haven't seen it, and if you, oh, and by the way, if you can't run four miles, most of you guys in the back row there, I know who you are, I'm going to get your name, rank, and serial number. If you can't run four miles, we also do a three-mile walk. And we, and for those of you who like to be in the military guard, we also this year did a three-mile ruck. So if you don't know what a ruck is, it's a military backpack, and this year, we asked you to fill it with non-perishable food goods and all that went to shelters that need food goods for the winter. We also had the Waterbury Young Marines there, and they collected t-shirts, socks, and warm undergarments for people who need them. And last year, they filled four bags. This year, they filled five bags worth of goods that needed to go to people who are in need. So again, as a runner, longtime runner, you don't get to run through too many courses where you get to go through horse farms, nice countryside. And for those of you who run the Manchester Road Race, it's a great tune-up because we got Bunker Hill, not as big and nasty as one in Manchester, but it does get your attention. So again, I wanted to thank the town and thank everybody for your support. I know I've been bugging you probably since the late spring, but everything went very, very well. Also, we raised this year almost $10,000. All of that money has been given to veteran organizations. Tomorrow, we're doing one more check presentation. We have one left to go, but we've made checks, we will have given away all that money that we raised as a result of this event. So thank you to the town, thank you for everybody who supported it. Coventry looked really good, so thank you for all that.
Thank you.
I would like to start by congratulating each of you for earning a spot on the Coventry Town Council. As a retired school administrator, I believe data is important. The election data and watching the recount of the ballots told me that Republicans voted for Democrats, Democrats voted for Republicans, and unaffiliated voted for both parties. Over 28 people wrote in votes for Mickey Mouse, Queen Elizabeth, and our very own Greg Kiss. Over 60% of our community feels that it does not matter who is elected, as they chose not to vote. When you were elected to this office, you took an oath to serve our community, not one party or the other. I urge you to serve with honor and integrity. Convince the 60% who feel that nothing changes that they are wrong. Be the council who rises above the negative comments on Facebook and sets the example for our children of how to agree to disagree respectfully. In honor of your moving from the Republican and Democratic candidates for office to seated members of our town council, I would like to make each of you, this is a sample, a Coventry Town Council shirt. I have two samples here of a design for you to choose from, and I do it because it's cold, long-sleeved winter polos. The council can choose the design of your choice and the color you'd like. I just need how you want your names to appear on the shirt and the size that you'd like. Please let this be a reminder that we are all members of this wonderful community. While we may see different paths to desired outcomes, we are more than a political party. We are family, friends, and neighbors. In the event that John tells me I can't just donate the shirts to you, I would like you as a council to donate money to either the Town Food Bank or PJ Day to benefit CCMC as payment for the shirts. Thank you.
Carolyn Arabolas, 132 North Farms Road. First, I want to congratulate all of you on your election and reelection to Town Council, and thank you for your service to our town. While council meetings are not the place for town politics, they are the appropriate venue to hold our elected leaders accountable. Disrupting a Board of Education meeting with name-calling and under-the-breath mutterings is not professional, nor is this a type of behavior we expect from our town officials. Bringing your concerns in a constructive manner to the audience of citizens, as Mr. Williams did this past Thursday, is the appropriate way to express your frustration and disagreement with the actions of a government body and its members. Additionally, using social media to encourage others to harass a board member is most certainly not acceptable conduct of elected officials. This shameful behavior shows a clear lack of leadership, continues to amp up the venomous rhetoric we all want to put behind us, and is not something we as citizens should tolerate. Regardless of political affiliation or who voted for who, we all look to each of you to lead and govern with integrity, honesty, and with the best interests of Coventry in mind. I ask that you always be mindful of this great obligation bestowed on you by your friends and neighbors in holding yourselves to a high standard of leadership and in continuing to move our town forward.
I live at 41 Sean Circle. At Thursday night's Board of Education meeting, the town's new and returning representatives of our school system were sworn in before a room overflowing with citizens. What should have been a celebratory evening for everyone involved became a deeply embarrassing and dehumanizing and dehumanizing spectacle, in part due to the behavior of members of this Town Council. At that meeting, Mr. Oros chose to nominate and support Jennifer Bosale to continue as Chair of the Board of Education. He gave a statement explaining why he was making that choice, prefacing his statement with the acknowledgement that his decision would be controversial. Undoubtedly, everyone is entitled to their own personal opinions regarding Mr. Oros' decisions, be they in support or against. Each member of council and every citizen of this town has the right to their own feelings about what happened. That said, there are appropriate and respectful ways in which to express those opinions. As council, our elected representatives, you are and should be held to a higher standard of behavior. You represent an example to the Coventry community on how to express differing opinions in such a way that we can continue to work together and, at the end of the day, walk out of that room and still be neighbors. Expressing your opinions with civility and basic decency should be your standard. Instead, members of this council were heard by each person in that room, muttering during the proceedings, and in some cases outright shouting insults at Mr. Oros. Making this display particularly disappointing, students and their parents were also present and therefore were forced to bear witness to this behavior. Present in the room were four students there to receive CAPS Superintendent Student Awards, a high honor for them and their families. Also present were students meant to observe the meeting for their civic involvement class. Those students were laughing at you. They were laughing at the behavior displayed because it was so outrageous. The people seated before me tonight should be setting an example for the students in this town of what it means to be an elected representative in Coventry, to care for their community, and to strive to do good. What they saw was adults behaving like children. And so respectfully, I stand before you tonight as a member of Coventry's community, as a parent, and as a person who expects all of you to do and be better, and I demand that a public apology be made by the council members who participated in this behavior, not only to Mr. Oros for the way that he was treated, but to Naomi Lynn Sanders, Owen Dieterly, Ava Coonley, Dylan Patrick, their families, and all of the high school CI students who had to witness what happened in that room. The election is over. It's time for both the Board of Education and the Town Council to work together as a single team to make our community better and stronger. And I do request that this statement be read into the minutes, please.
She's a little bit shorter than everyone else. I'm Robin Gallagher, 984 Main Street. I have to say that I believe I've interacted with each of you in one capacity or another, and it's been my pleasure to do so. And based on that, I think we're close enough that I can tell you a shameful secret. I'm a lawyer. It's true. I litigate and I argue with people for a living, which shouldn't be a surprise to any of you who have interacted with me on Facebook. Despite that, I have to say that with years of litigating and going into courtrooms with people against whom I am actually opposed, I have never seen the type of behavior that was exemplified on Thursday in the Board of Ed meeting. In these litigation contexts, there is a winner or a loser. It is often a zero-sum game. My motion is either granted or denied. And there are times when I'm incredibly frustrated with opposing counsel. Maybe I feel he's misled the court, maybe I feel he's been dishonest, maybe I feel he's been disrespectful to me. Despite that, the expectation for my behavior is that it's always civil, because we are a small legal community, and we may run into each other at the bar event. Town government is different. This is not a zero-sum game. There are no winners or losers here. You were each elected to work together so that everyone wins. And when you leave this room, you're neighbors who may run into each other at the actual bar. So all I'm asking is that you raise the level of your behavior above the bar set by lawyers. All you have to do is behave better than lawyers, and given the legal community's reputation, that shouldn't be too hard. So respectfully, I stand before you tonight as a member of Coventry's community, as a parent, as a person who expects all of you to do and be better, and I request a public apology be made by the council members who participated in the behavior at question, not only to Mr. Oros for the way he was treated, but also to the four students there to receive an award, their families, and all of the high school CI students who had to witness what happened in that room. The election is over. It's no longer a zero-sum game. We're all expected to work together, so it's time for both the Board of Education and the Town Council to come together as a single team to make our community better and stronger. I also request that this statement be read into the minutes. Thank you.
My name is Angela Raymond, and I live at 122 Judd Road. Ms. O'Brien, I would appreciate it if you gave me your full attention, as you have actually not given everyone your full attention. Thank you. Senior, junior, thank you. Respectfully, I stand before you tonight as a member of Coventry's community, as a parent, as a person who expects all of you to do and be better, and I demand a public apology be made by the council members who participated in this behavior, not only to Mr. Oros for the way he was treated, but to Naomi Lynn Sanders, Owen Dieterly, Ava Coonley, and Dylan Patrick, their families, and all of the high school CI students who had to witness what happened in that room. The election is over, and it is time for both the Board of Education and the Town Council to work together as a single team to make our community better and stronger, and I also request that this statement be read into the minutes. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch your name when you spoke.
Oh, Angela Raymond. Raymond?
Good evening. My name is Bob Chipkin, I'm at 454 Cassidy Hall Road. Excuse me. First, I want to congratulate all the new members of the council. I'm confident that all of you will continue to act in the future in the best interests of Coventry and in their citizens. There is some unfinished business from last year. I have several items that I'd like to talk through. First is the issue that was probably deferred last year, and that's putting the town on record regarding tolls. Tolls fortunately have not been brought up by the majority party at the state level, but there's always the concern that it may be brought back, and I think it's perfectly legitimate for this town to express its opinion. I'm not demanding that you do it, I'm humbly suggesting that you do it, to offer to the state government the idea that Coventry is not behind tolls. Second item I'd like to discuss is the library. I have the minutes, they were available for the last two meetings. The first, the October 28th meeting, had a discussion of the library. It stated that the courtyard was going to be expanded to the extent of 432 feet. Based on discussions with various members of the council, I know that that number is low. However, it's not in the subsequent minutes, and as far as I know, the town still has out there that that low level of construction is going to occur. I think it's much higher. And in addition, it appears from the October 28th minutes that we're talking about a very, very substantial project, millions of dollars. I stood before this group two years ago, when the number was $5.5 million, and I said, "That's not going to fly." It didn't fly with the town. I still think that an expansion, frankly, of the library in the millions of dollars is not going to fly when it comes up for the next vote. I would suggest that you might talk to the existing committee and tell them to back down to a more reasonable level of expenditure and of necessary construction of the library. Thank you very much.
As you know, I also was in attendance on Thursday night's Board of Education meeting, and I also had the displeasure of witnessing the events that took place after Mr. Bill Oros made his, his, might I add, decision to do what he chose was best with his vote on Thursday night. With that said, respectfully, I stand before you tonight as a member of Coventry's community, as a parent, as a person who expects all of you to do and be better, and I demand a public apology be made by the council members who participated in the behavior, not only to Mr. Oros for the way that he was treated, but also to Naomi Lynn Sanders, Owen Dieterly, Ava Coonley, Dylan Patrick, and their families, and to all of the high school CI students who had to witness what happened in that room. Mind you, the four students that were mentioned sat there and waited and witnessed while they were supposed to be receiving their superintendent's awards. The election is over, and it's time for both the Board of Education and the Town Council to work together as a single team to make our community better and stronger. I also request that this statement be read into the minutes. Thank you.
Jessica Hall, 745 Merrill Road. You've heard it many times, and you're going to have to listen to it again. I'm a first-grade teacher. I know that for some people, they need to hear things repeatedly to really understand the message being sent. Respectfully, I stand before you tonight as a member of Coventry's community, as a parent, as a person who expects all of you to do and be better. I demand a public apology be made by the council members who participated in this behavior, not only to Mr. Oros for the way he was treated, but to Naomi Lynn Sanders, Owen Dieterly, Ava Coonley, Dylan Patrick, their families, and all of the high school CI students who had to witness what happened in that room. The election is over, and it is time for both the Board of Education and Town Council to work together as a single team to make our community better and stronger. I also request that this statement be read into the minutes.
Seeing none, I close that portion of our meeting. Can I have a motion to accept our minutes?
We have to approve the minutes in the report. Second.
Any changes, corrections, additions? For those of us that were present.
Page three, under F1, top line, just second sentence just changed today, I believe.
Yep. I'm sorry, page three.
Page three, under F1, first line.
Oh, F1, okay.
F1, first line, second sentence.
I was looking at V1. Okay.
Page six, B192022, like the eighth line down, right before, if you look for Amanda's name, it's the word right before it. Says between senior staff and junior staff, I believe it should say time, because what we were trying to do is determine the mix of their allocated time. I got a question, and this may be correct in the minutes, but it may not be. On page seven, it talks about the new crossbar that we're putting in. And John, so I'd asked about additional signing, and you said there will be one. Is it one in each direction? I just, it wasn't clear.
I think the point was, will it be on the front and back of each post, on each side?
Okay, I was asking if there's going to be a, I thought I was asking if there was going to be a sign, like, you know.
In advance?
In advance?
Yes.
So there'd be one on each?
There's, yes, there's several right now coming this way.
Okay.
And there's only one coming that way, so we're trying to get one.
One additional. So it is only one additional, not one in each direction?
Right.
That's all I was asking. I think that's all I have.
Minutes to say one additional?
John? Okay, yeah, that would make it clear.
John?
Yes, I have at the bottom of page three, under F1, the last bullet. Right now, it makes reference at the end of the first line to the methane fields at Miller Richardson. I'd like to change that to the methane venting at Miller Richardson, and then I'd like to add football field for clarity, because there are the baseball fields and the football fields, so. Is that clear? Further, I have some others, I'm sorry. On page four, just about halfway down the page, it's in the first bullet there, where that actually shows a bullet. One, two, three, fourth up from the bottom of that bullet, it says, "The military is supposing to," I think that's supposed to be doing something. And then at the bottom of that page, second to last bullet, second line up, it says, "The ability to fish," I think it was specifically "their ability to fish," referring to the Raptors just prior to that. God bless you.
Second bullet from the bottom?
So, second bullet from the bottom, second line from the bottom of that, or, no, it's the very last.
Very last line.
Sorry.
Okay, there you go.
Is that clear?
Yes, I'm not sure if it's correct, though.
John, do you have a sense? It was discussed, that's what I heard, I was a cousin at the meeting, but John eloquently stated it, I think I've heard it in more than one meeting.
Was it the ability of the birds to fish?
Yeah.
Or the ability of people to fish? So then?
No, the birds.
Insert about the Raptors and their ability.
Moving to the next page, page five. I just have a question, clarification, under two, microgrid COGEN update, one, two, three, four line from the bottom, says installation of tiles for peak demand, is that a correct term? I don't know.
Yeah, it's, tile, thick of tiles is electronic control.
Okay, just throw that out there, because I didn't quite remember that, and I'm usually pretty good with terminology.
That's what they call them.
Okay.
Normal person wouldn't know what it is.
Under item four, capital budget, the end of the last full line there, it says, "The operation budget manual coming." I think we should insert the word "is" coming out on Friday. Do you see where I am?
Got it.
You're good? Okay, I'm sorry. Just don't want to keep blowing past. And I believe that's all I have.
Lisa, did you have something?
Uh, no, he covered it.
Sorry.
And I have just one on page two. The seventh paragraph down, that starts with Matthew O'Brien. The end of the sentence, "The food from Highland Park," probably just said, "The food was from Highland Park," at the end of that first line.
Yes.
Otherwise, everything that it caught.
It means either way.
I think he had said that both were terrific.
Yeah.
Which is why the sentence reads the way it reads.
You mean that speaker actually worked terrific.
The food from Highland Park.
And the speaker just worked terrific.
That's fine, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing else? All those in favor of approving the minutes as corrected, please say aye.
Aye.
Any extensions? Did you have stuff?
Yeah.
All right. Next on our agenda is a consent agenda. For anyone new to the council, these are items marked with an asterisk. If we vote to approve the consent agenda, those things will not be discussed tonight at the table. Do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda? Someone? Thank you, Lisa.
I'd like to, if I could?
Yeah.
I'd like to remove item six, F11, just to, based in the Winter's Farmers Market, just to highlight that.
Okay.
Promise there won't be much discussion, but just to.
Anything else anybody wants to remove from our consent agenda? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda with removing six, F11, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, her reports. Under my report, I want to talk a little about interaction with town staff. In the past, we have attempted to be sure that there was a proper path and that we didn't take up too much staff time or that we got the answers correctly. I want to be sure that we all feel free to seek our answers, whether it's from the town manager, Amanda Backhouse, or whomever. But John Elsesser is our staff, he's the first person we would typically contact. If you seek out information, I would hope that you would then share your findings so that we can all learn from something you're researching. But I was almost hoping, or I want to send it to Steering so that we could look at this, how best we as council members can use the town staff, or what, you know, do you foresee any problems with one or the other, Board of Ed, Dr. Patron, if we have questions on things? How do we best get our answers? So I think I'd love to send that to Steering, and then Steering can bring it back to the whole council, and we can look at it and maybe reconstruct our policy on that or create an actual policy for it. One other thing that we always have to be aware of, when we get an email from our town manager, from any of us, you cannot respond to all, because that will then constitute a meeting, and that is not okay. We need to warn our meetings.
If it's a subject that will be discussed at the council table.
Right, but you can respond to John Elsesser, you can respond to Laura Stone, but please be aware that you should not reply to all.
That does not infringe your right to caucus with the new parties.
Right, right, this was. All right, and in our packet, we have information that this Thursday, November 21st, at 7:00 here at the Town Hall, and there will be a meeting to discuss the Swamp Road four-way intersection. We all got something handed out this evening, if anybody's interested. I think that is what I wanted to report on this evening. Are there? Say that again? Oh, I'm looking, and I wrote all over my paper, I'm sorry. Tonight, John Elsesser is going to tell us what projects are underway, what the council prior to this one has been working on, and then after that, I would like us to discuss perhaps a goal-setting meeting, or if you think we can accomplish it just during an actual council meeting, but I typically, it'd be better to have an informal meeting where we could really talk about things and then come back at the council table and present our goals and set them down. Okay. Any council members wish to speak on anything this evening? Lisa?
Just very briefly, I just wanted to say that I went to the opening of the Coventry Winter's Farmers Market, and it was fantastic. Yeah, they're a little late, but it was still plenty of people there, so it was a great event.
Yeah, I wasn't able to attend this one. Anybody else have anything they want to share? Council members? Nope?
I do, I'll read something real quick.
All right.
So I wanted to thank the residents of Coventry who came out to speak tonight. I love the passion, the commitments to their opinions, and the fact that Coventry has awoken. The turnout was exceptional on Election Day, which showed us that the public is very concerned about the direction Coventry is heading with the instability of our state government. Whichever side of the aisle you may be on, the message voters sent was that they wanted Republican leadership on both the Town Council and the Board of Education. I'm proud of my party, my town, and all my associates here at the council. Democracy isn't always convenient or comfortable. We as Americans began our nation as revolutionaries, and that revolutionary spirit still echoes in our blood to this day. Again, thank you Coventry voters for believing in us, believing in me, and in those across the aisle. Let us now get to work on making Coventry the best it can be.
Thank you. Matt, do you have a finance committee report to share?
We did meet tonight at 6:30. We didn't, I don't have anything, if you were able to just, you know, view the reports that Amanda included in the packet, I think you have all the information that we got. It was more of a get-to-know-the-statements-and-figure-out-where-we-are-and-be-able-to-move-forward kind of a meeting, so.
Anybody have any questions about our finance reports at this time? Thank you. John?
So, you have written projects update report from me, highlights that report, Swamp Road intersection improvement meeting was starting to discuss. The Community Center for Joyce Project is complete except for the final finished floor, but the room can be opened off and walk on the plywood. But we have to get a treatment, and we've decided to break from the past of carpeting in that section and go to some type of vinyl surface, which is more conducive to paint and other things, but not yet.
Not that we encourage that.
No, but with the after-school program and other events there, it is a reality. We've had a tough fall for getting our projects done, between the rain and the cold weather, so we were able to squeak in some last-minute paving, but we're pretty much done because it's just getting too cold for us to continue on. Next week, maybe some minor finish work by the town of a couple of projects we have opened, but a lot of the work down will have to wait till spring. But we were able to get some longstanding, longstanding, many decades-long-standing projects on Red Spill Road, and also a project up on Deppa Drive, which has been ongoing in a high sea problem resolved, as well as a lot of the other projects that are going on. The flagpole project out front is.
That's another decades-long project.
Yeah, I actually have a plan for when Jeff Jacobson was our town engineer. We waited for a good funding source and finally got some state money to fund that, and then we had to scale back on the original bids, and I like the size it is, I think it's more appropriate than the larger one. So we have another bench coming in in about three weeks or so, and Ackard Electric will be finishing up some of the enhanced flagpole light, because people, it was being lifted in the back and people couldn't see the front. He donated that labor and work, and we ran some conduit that if we want to add a sign that says Town Hall, it will be lit also. So that's nearing its conclusion, too. And in finance, we also discussed the revaluation. The change notices will be coming out in early December. The assessment will be before the council in early December, or two days before the notices go out to kind of explain the overall, where we stand. And I just will say this repeatedly as we go through revaluation, because it's a time of turmoil, revaluation does not give the town more money. It just shovels who pays that share of it. As your house value goes up, it goes up or down, as a higher percentage compared to the norm, you're either paying more or less if the budget remains the same in terms of revenues and expenditures. So in and of itself, it doesn't bring any more money in. The mill rate may either go up or down, depending on how the grant list goes, if, to equal the same net revenue received by the town before we talk about the budget. And we'll try to do our best as we go through the budget process to show how that impact, but it will impact people differently, and we have to keep that in mind. It's just, like many times in life, there's going to be winners and losers, but it's based on evaluating the property, not anything you've done. So that, I'll kind of stop there.
Well, you could talk about Jones Crossing if you want.
Did they get it done?
Yeah, the paving's done.
So Jones Crossing is pretty much done, which ended up, we're hoping it'd be done in October, and it ended up rolling into November a little bit, but I think it's a good-looking project, and again, came in, we're able to bring in it slightly under budget, and helped out, we got some rent money into that will offset some of our borrowing expenses, so.
It's much improved, and we're hopeful that it won't flood during the winter now and ice over every year.
Some of the pictures that we had, when, after a heavy rain, you could see, you could handle that in the old cover, it just never could have, so. And we never did find a turtle, which has saved us $1,000 a day. A couple really other quick things, just to let you know. The town staff, I do have a town staff person to ask if we could participate in PJ Day this year, and we will be, so we'll need to register, but people come in and see us in appropriate pajama wear. We're honoring some good that has come out of our town, many good things that have come out of our town, but it's just amazing that, I think I heard that my person's can make a difference, and that truly is true. And Northfield Catch Basin Project is also starting, so. Newns Construction is starting up there on some catch basins. We have more bids that will be going out, but that's underway right now.
Yes, Lisa. Is it appropriate for me to ask you questions about things on the project memo?
No.
You said there's not going to be any more paving. Where does that leave Merrill Road?
That will get.
Anybody else driving Merrill Road these days?
Yeah, I was going to ask if you were.
So I saw a little bit of it got done, but, you know, some of us are finding creative details.
Yeah, some neighbors actually have called Puppet Works and thanked us for this beat-up pump, but, no, that will be finished.
That is.
If not, it'll be ramps, it will be, but we're on the paving companies' list, but there's huge lines of the asphalt plants because of the rainy days, and when it's too cold in the morning, they can't, this is going to be too detailed, but asphalt plants during the normal season can make product and keep it warm in their tower, they can't do it when it's that cold at night, because it won't be hot. So they have to make it as they're going, which means that if the trucks show up in the morning, they have to wait. So it becomes kind of like Tom Hanks movie, you came up with a lottery today, and you know, your house is going to get fixed. Depends if your truck's in line on whether you get products. We're on the list, but we can't get guaranteed that we're going to get asphalt, and actually we're bringing asphalt from up in particularly Massachusetts now.
And this is, I mean, I know, the last time I served on council, there were asphalt issues, because we passed a road bond then as well. But when my neighbor stopped me while I'm walking the dog, I can say at least if we can't get it paved, some temporary measure.
Yeah, you're not going to have that keyway, and that's cut.
Right.
And that was, that work was scheduled, you know, we cut that keyway two days ahead of when the work was supposed to happen, and then we just got rained out, and then we got frozen out. So, one way or another, that won't winter, because we don't want to hit that with additional plexi.
Also, in the project memo is item, I think, 16, talks about putting a possible septic system at Laidlaw to allow a claylit trailer. I'm just curious to know where that location, what's being considered for where that would go? It's great, because then there won't be porta-potties to be tipped over anymore.
Yeah, so, will be, it depends where the good soils are, so they'll be going up and doing deep holes and perp tests, but in general, the location they're looking at is just slightly into the woods beyond the place gate.
Oh, the dogs are going to love that.
Somewhere will probably be, you know, in that corner there where next to the place gate, the septic system would be probably into the woods a little bit. But we have a couple other alternatives to look at if that fails. So it's just, we are prioritizing roads over parks right now.
That makes sense. And then also, an ongoing project is the disc golf course at Laidlaw, which I was just walking.
At Creaser.
I mean, sorry, at Creaser. It was helpful to walk it, and I, it was helpful to see how the pathways have been constructed to be, for the most part, away from where typical pedestrian traffic is happening, and my husband was able to explain to me how it's all going to work. But what was interesting was, he was commenting that because of the level of challenge that this discourse, golf discourse, is going to reach, thank you, it's, it could attract a lot of people who are looking for this type of opportunity, and I just want to make sure that we leverage that, that we leverage that traffic. We should have Wayfair signs at Laidlaw directing, I'm sorry, I go to Laidlaw. We should have Wayfair signs at Creaser directing people when they're done into our village. We can have QR codes at the stations directing people into our village. They're going to be hungry, they will have been throwing their discs, I mean, in the summertime, they can go pay the gate fee and swim at Patriots Park. So I'm hoping that that's somewhere on a list, you know, we're always talking about how are we going to get people from the things we offer into our, down into our village, and spending their money here, so.
We should.
Maybe that's something that Steering can take up first. And I have one other question. Under public safety, you made a comment that efforts in support, and again, members from the previous term might know the answer to this, but I don't. Efforts in support of school security and the juvenile review board have taken a lot of staff time, and I'm just, to me, that sounds like a positive thing. It sounds like there are efforts being made to increase the safety of our kids and help students with their behaviors. Is that what's going on? What do you mean when you say that?
No, it's, it's both to share where our focus is, our good officers, Spodinsky, has spent a lot of time reviewing their plans, meeting with the school staff administrations and going over their plans, giving instructions on.
Like their lockdown plans? You mean their actual drill plans?
The whole school security plans, not just the lockdowns are just one piece of the product plan. So I think it might be best to have Chief Palmer in to talk about that, which he can talk about, some of which he can't, because some of it is protected. But it's positive, positive things, not enforced. It's to be of assistance to the Board of Ed in revising and updating their plans, they're going through the security things. And the juvenile review boards, we actually have five cases pending to alternative punishment, and those cases take a lot of time also. So that is not as positive, except it's a positive that they're not going through the other criminal system.
Right. My question was more along the lines of how are we leveraging that partnership with our police department and the use of the juvenile review board to support families and support positive student behaviors, positive student changes? Is there, is there a liaison, like a personal liaison?
Well, they're truly run by the Human Services Office and our Youth Services Person, so there's a lot of, it is a family, family issue, it's not, they're juveniles, so the families are brought in as part of that. So, you know, it's a lengthy process, each case can be hours and hours and hours of personal, you know, like anything, accepting responsibility for your actions, and then moving on to coming up with what the consequences, what's the plan to go forward, what community service you may be serving to compensate the community for your actions. So every case is individually different, but we have counseling supports as well as So every case is individually different, but we have counseling supports as well as formal counseling, like professional licensed people. And it's a cooperation between the school district, the police department and our human and youth services program. So it's a lot of time on all of that. I view it as very positive for the alternatives.
I know a lot of times it's the, you know, families are looking for assistance for how do they support their children and how do they parent effectively?
So we do get some youth services enhancement grant money and that goes into hiring and license the family counselors or sec collars.
Any other questions of John on his project's memo?
Couple of quick ones, John. The Miller Richardson, do you have any estimates yet? Have we gotten any pricing or any?
For softball you're talking about?
No, 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 no.
Football or baseball?
I'm sorry, football.
Football. Yes, the application fee for DEP's gonna be about $4,000 or so. We're afraid it's gonna be higher than that.
Yep. That's one of my questions because the last time you said it was gonna be very expensive.
The actual, anchor engineering at originally said it was gonna be like $7,000 total, total project. We think it's gonna be less than that. We had some prices that were running more like 50.
Okay.
But we need to see, we need to see what DEP requires for our project.
Similarly, do we have any idea at all about the CHS wall code compliance building committee?
No. They are meeting on Wednesday night.
Okay.
Isn't it Wednesday?
I thought it was conflicting with Thursdays.
Thursday night, yes, I had to quote myself, that's right. Had to read your places someone.
Thank you, John.
So we have no idea about cost impacts. The report is available, I could certainly send it out. I have the sense that the chairman of that committee, Popek Chescos, has some thoughts. He has been a genius to date. I've got the sense that he had an approach that he wants to talk to the consulting engineer in DeBlasi to say, could you do this? And last TV said that, we saved a lot of money. So I'm anxiously waiting to see what happens at that meeting. But there's no other word to say, but this community is blessed with people on the right committee at the right time that just bring their skills. And this one's been a long, arduous, slow, trudging path, but we've gotten, we've saved tens of millions already through the work. And now we're just down to wind versus earthquake and I'm surprised the wind is as bad.
Tens of millions?
Really. We talk about maybe having to tear down all the walls, each wall at a time. So now the worst case is there's some walls that don't have enough or the right size rebar. So there has to just be another support. Reinforcing technique, either to go in and put more or more rebar in, slicing the walls open and doing it, or having some other tension in the system, because what we're dealing with is the twisting effect of the wind. So all we have to do is kind of make it more rigid. And there's ways to do that, but in some cases, it's gonna be easier just to go cut the walls open and do this little pieces here. But we're counting right now on the use of sound acoustic testing equipment and maybe that it's not picking up, it's not like Oak Island where it always finds something. Sometimes it may just not be able to read it. So if we go in, it may actually be there. So, thank you. They're taking a slow method and unfortunately, we just don't have pricing, but I think we're getting to that stage within probably six months.
All right, next item on our agenda, 6F2 is the Connecticut DEEP decision regarding our Bolton-Cavendish sewer extension.
All I can say is extremely discouraging. For a number of years, the WPCA has been trying to work very collaboratively and cooperatively with our Bolton, Vernon, Lake's Authority Sewer Extension. And the DEEP has been kind of saying they didn't like the project from day one and we went through the process that they required us to do to see if it even wanted to care and they only got one response from the Council on Environmental Quality. The letter was very, very flawed. It talked about how this sewer could impact and permanent development in Vernon and Bolton. Bolton already has sewers, Vernon is nowhere near this line and all sorts of other kind of misrepresentations. We asked, we asked whether we should respond to it and we're told by DEP not to respond to the letter. And then they cited that as one of the reasons that they are looking for a solution short of saying yes. So in the meantime, they're saying no and that they will gladly work with us to kind of come up with a solution. I didn't wait for the council meeting and emailed Senator Champagne and Representative Ackert. I met with that Representative Ackert today up at the LOB on Microgrid Project and he's gonna be following up with DEP to try and sup cause of being. In fact, the Department of Environmental Protection has a policy in place and they were told of that by the Office of Policy Management, that if there are no state funds, they have no jurisdiction. And that's the policy that the Council on Environmental Quality is trying to get overturned and using us as the case model to do that. So we will plot OPM's policy and say, why aren't you going along with your own policy? And see where that can go, but we go. But we are not happy and we have invested a lot of time and money to test. They made allegations like the system may not be sized right, it may not be able to take it and we spent a lot of time with Jacobus Southern Engineering to do testing, the pressure testing and capacity testing and long-term logging. We limited the size of the original proposal based on DEP's concerns about impacts, which meant not serving Twin Hills even though they have failed septic systems or struggling septic systems because they have public water. DEP didn't consider raw septic from septic systems as a community health hazard because they have public water. So anyway, we're now having to move to a more formal argumentative status and at some point, I don't know how strong the WPCA will want to argue this because they've already spent a lot of money and I don't know how much further they want to go. So that will be up to maybe a meeting between the council.
The council allocated money for the testing and stuff though.
Yeah, I mean, to us, it makes all the sense in the world to have the more dense development on the roads where all the traffic is. And you know, on one side, the state is saying, well, why aren't you doing things for attainable housing or mixed housing? And that's a possibility there, but you've got to have sewers. I mean, just, our plant here doesn't have enough capacity to do a lot, but the traffic volume also, the market forces say it's not there. So the reality is, the land that we're talking about, it's not gonna be farmland. It's gonna be other alternative uses, like one is already approved to use car lot. I think we could do better than that.
Are any of the properties, I thought there were in Coventry that are still in sewer, their septic's are in trouble and I thought that we were doing this for other reasons other than economic development.
Absolutely. The 7-Eleven has porta potties up there.
They don't, I mean, this letter doesn't consider any of this.
No. It's disheartening and the state has, the state, that department has had a long-term policy of sewer avoidance. They don't believe in sewers. But sewers, and in their letter, they say, this looks like you're doing it for economic development purposes. And the answer is partly yes. Partly it's solving community health hazards in our opinion, but it's also the right spot, it's in our plan of conservation and development. We believe it's also an estate plan of conservation development, which has it as a village node, not a farm node. They don't own the land, there's no restrictions on it. You know, if you, we say this often at planning and zoning commission meetings, if you don't want something to happen next to you, own it. So we're very frustrated that we're being a pawn in the middle of some larger statewide battle and it's not fair to our taxpayers, it's not fair to the long-term planning processes that we've had. This has been, through the last plan of conservation development, which is now 10 years old, we've worked slowly, diligently, cooperatively with DEP to scale things back and to get this letter was frankly shocking. And there's other motivations here and you know, we do believe that the state, somewhere the state should allow development. We need it, our tax base is only 3% or 3.6% or so of the commercial industrial and a lot of that are utilities. So when you really get down to it, we, we're in the bottom 15 of the state for that percentage of our grant list. It's not healthy, it's not sustainable, we need to do better and we need these resources to do it. So more coming, I haven't heard from Senator Champagne yet, but Representative Ackert will be making some home calls later and we have to set something up.
Thank you. All right, I had asked John to come for her tonight to give us a good microgrid update with even some history for anybody that's new to the council.
So I didn't have a lot of time to do that. Unfortunately, early this morning, we had also asked Representative Ackert to set up a meeting with Deputy Commissioner of DEP. The Microgrid Company has asked a question on conflict within the contract that they have. One section says they can't get paid until they hit these milestones and another says that if the project is in termination, it says if it's termination, that you get paid for expenses that have occurred.
And these are changes that the new attorney general put in place this year?
Actually, not that specific one there, there were some other, they actually were able to keep their old contract laying. But there were some other changes that in terms of the milestone payment, which actually went back one contract ago. But, so there's a conflict in the language on whether you get paid if you haven't met the milestone, if the project's terminated. The issue is, is that they have to start paying two major pots of money. One, $25,000 to Eversource to just look at the project. They've given them some courtesy kind of things, but they need to get into full design and that $25,000 is a down payment and they believe it will be another $60,000 on top of it by the time they're done with it. And then their own engineering firm that has given some, some kind of, here's how you do it, here's what it's spec, they want to get into kind of the shop drumming stages. They won't do that till they get money at this point, they've done it all at risk. So we met with.
You may want to explain that they've put up all the money to do everything that they've done so far.
They've been working on this project for over two years, all at their risk and at their expense. The Housing Authority hasn't paid anything except kind of our own time. And they're just worried at this point that, you know, the serious outflows to other people, other companies, they want to make sure that if, if Eversource, for example, if Eversource's final product is, you know, a lot more than they think it is and they can't produce a power purchase agreement for us that's willing, that we're willing to pay and we say no, then they're just out all that money. So we had a positive meeting today with the new Deputy Commissioner, Vicki Hackett, who came over from the pure regulatory side, so she's familiar with these types of projects. She's gonna, says, well, you're dealing, you've asked the questions of the accounting office, this is really a legal question, so let's get the DEP's legal terms in because there's two languages, which one governs? And if the termination clause governs, then that helps them with their financial backers and they're, they need assurances because they got to take out loans for funding this project. And the uncertainty is not making the project attractive right now, so.
But the other language was changed, except the former contract language?
They were able to keep the old language, but there's a lot of clocks ticking here too. The federal tax laws changed in December, how some of these energy projects are treated, so they really need to get something substantially started so that they can declare the project starting within that threshold and then it starts all the time. So we appreciate Representative Ackert setting that meeting up and we found out at 8:35 this morning that we had a 2 o'clock meeting, so we had to kind of shuffle things around. But to answer your question, that microgrid project, this is actually be the third council that has worked on it. And the kind of, a couple councils ago, the finance committee made a recommendation and then we already had to transfer to a new council, so now this is gonna be transferred from the decision when we transfer to this council. So product's been, again, through, started, we kind of went out under two councils ago and the last council did the formal authorization to go ahead at, really the first meeting, based on a recommendation coming forward in the prior finance. And then it's been a lot of work by a lot of people and active work with Housing Authority and the Board of Education's facility staff and obviously our council staff. So keep hitting issues and coming up with them, so far we've come up with solutions. Cash flow is gonna be one that's very difficult to deal with.
Because it affects our costs.
So we, you know, the only thing that's going on right now is at their risk and their expense, one of the partners' tool of engineering has installed these tiles or it will be installing them starting this week. They've bench tested them now. They'll be starting over at the Housing Authority because we have the least amount of data on the individual units there. So I think they're scheduled to be installed on Wednesday of this week and then in some of the major buildings, they'll be doing it. And what that gives is interval data, which will help find tuning things like demand charges and, but it's basically a little, almost a little beater that's giving energy characteristics for each of the, each of the users. So very important information there will be at finding tuning prices because they have real data versus assumptions.
So you had mentioned that they had some hesitancy about having a new council and wanted to know if they had our support. I don't know if you need us, but I think we are probably all very supportive and we'd want to express that to them and make sure that they're comfortable. Unless anybody has any reservations?
Strong-throated support. I will share that with them and I think we have the same across the park and the board, but we'll let them go online. But obviously, we have made clear to them that, you know, it's gotta be, can't really be increasing their costs, you know, we can't afford that. But the Deputy Commissioner was a little taken aback at how comprehensive this is compared to the other microgrids. I mean, schools, shelter, fire, police, communications, eating and elderly housing, fueling, emergency operations.
Communications.
So, you know, the only thing it doesn't really have is, you know, if we put in ATM, then we have the banking company and the grocery store. So those are the only two that we don't have and it's a much different scale than all the other projects and it's so compact compared to Woodbridge, I think it's Woodbridge put in one, but the distance is like a mile between some of the sources and we're really compact. So it should be more economical. And we're actually linking them with, the Board of Ed got a E-rate to run fiber and they're going underground to go all the way from the grammar school all the way to the Robertson School and a lot of it being cheaper than our contract with Charter because getting the federal E-rate dollars and they're microtunneling so they can bore instead of hanging it because the utilities are not meeting the law of giving an attachment permanent within 30 days. They're stretching out to months and they have to, they may be starting to work in March, firm out of Kansas coming in and they can, they can bore for 500 feet at a time when they slide the conduit in, put the fiber through. the conduit in, put the fiber through. And so we're teeming that up, but many of the contacts with this company called Lanarac and the microgrid people because they need the fiber for the controls and we happen to be going by. So it's all about connections.
Let's see what you did there.
So more to come. They're offering to do it at any time, but we really want to have an opportunity for more news. And I think we'll have that over the next several weeks. So I can move on to hydraulic treatment surveys. This is the preliminary look. It'll be according to the final report. This is from the company that did the survey work, not the application. So they're a subcontractor, but instead of waiting for the February report, we got this early draft. So the good news is the hydralate is in retreat and back to kind of some of the original facilities. The benthic barrier is still an issue that nobody's figured out whether it's better to leave it or take it out. Partly now it has dirt on it with some good plants growing on top of it. Dr. Cortman has offered to remove it. So before the spring, we'll have to make a decision on getting it out because we, as you're probably about to say, the turgons may be growing under that and we want to make sure they get treated.
I was actually going to ask what the area of that's covered currently. Do you know, do you have an idea? How big are the barriers?
They're not huge.
Yeah, they're many.
I think you could take them out in sections. It's basically a really rugged kind of garden barrier like you put the stoplights--
Weed control.
Yeah. So you could probably cut it out in sections and get it off. But there's been a lot of, you know, there's been arguments about where it is between some people. I believe it's up on the island on that side of the lake. Some people are saying it's down by, but I think it's up there.
They mapped it when they put it in, right?
Yes. So I think all that, as we move forward into February, we're supposed to have the full report and recommended treatment plan. I did talk to Dominic from Solitude a couple of weeks ago, a month ago or so. He did say he's, they're going to be recommending whole lake treatments for at least another year or two. We could see how these, see how it goes. And the good news is that the good plants seem to be tolerating it. And the side effects of some of the other nasty stuff that people don't like are also getting pulled off. So the lake is benefiting. So keep looking at it.
Yes, Lisa.
John, can you also give us an update on what's happening at Eagleville?
We did the fan ward treatment, and I haven't had a follow-up on that. So I'll have to get that.
Just want to echo about the benthic barrier thing after having paid attention to it over the last couple of years. And of course, I wasn't around when they were put in, but after having heard the various reports and things, I'd like to see them removed just to make sure that the treatment gets down to the underground storage of the hydrology plants. So for whatever, just putting that out there.
Next item is, as part of the Sustainable CT, the town qualified to have this resilience building workshop done. And we brought town staff together, spent a number of hours to go through kind of a tabletop exercise to talk about what we see as potential threats. I think you can see that public works are clearly involved because trees are talked about a lot. But it is a serious issue for us. So based on this, I think we've done, as a committee, a good job of awareness and working on a lot of issues and it maps out some things that we need to work on going forward. But I think it's a good document that will be incorporated into our plan of conservation development as an appendix.
Very great. Yes, it's a great, great report. Thank you.
And the prices seem better. Free.
Free.
There you go.
Yep, free.
It's close to that $50 for items.
Well, there's a lot of information in here.
I think there's a lot of good information.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I think it does say that we're doing a pretty good job, which is also good to hear. But it does always tell us what we need to concentrate on. And that's helpful, having an outsider come in to help guide you. And if you've watched the paper, you see a lot of the towns have been doing this, but not only in our state, it's also Massachusetts, Rhode Island, this group.
John, will we be trying to prioritize the, well, so I was looking at the Coventry annex for the Capital Region Natural. There's a lot of good projects in here. Will we be prioritizing those and then trying to put forward a detailed plan?
I think, yes. That should be looked at as we go into our capital budgeting. I mean, especially some of the dams issues and those culverts and water dams.
Oh, got you. Understood.
The ones that hold water.
I got you. Very good.
And then even with that, there's going to be a lot of controversy because a lot of state projects now are eliminating dams when they can. And that would be like no pond. I could see them ask us to remove it.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right.
Not that they're going to ask you to remove it.
I had asked John to include the CCM convention information in our packet. I am interested in attending. And I know it's kind of short notice, but is there any other council members that wanted to attend? It's two days.
Yeah. So the first day is the important day?
Yeah.
That's where they have the tradespeople, the exhibit hall, can learn a lot from vendors about what's out there. And they have a series of workshops that you'll have a hard time choosing from.
I strongly recommend anyone who's available to go. It's very useful and helpful.
And we do have money because I did go to my national conference this year. So I'll be glad to share those money for your registration fee. And I'm actually comped this year because I'm on the board.
All right. So considering that many of these types of municipal governing bodies are made up of volunteers, many of us who work outside of our homes, has there ever been, I mean, I could never show up on a weekday to this conference because it's my job. Has there ever been discussion? Does it hold these on?
Saturday.
Saturday?
They hold some CCM trainings on Saturdays. I know in January, there's a budget workshop that they're holding on Saturday mornings or somewhere, which I get that information, but the conference itself is not normally held.
Yeah. They probably get a cheaper rate on the facility on a weekday.
I'm doing this for a really cheap rate. To make sure I do this really well for the money I'm making.
I hear you. I hear you.
Yeah, and I know the cave ones are on weekends.
December 3 and 4.
So maybe as other things come up, if there's a way to give us an advance.
They do--
So we have that registration.
They do elected official workshops. They're doing some for the first time at this conference, too, but they're also will do them as many as said.
Yeah, I get that information out there.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just want to say I would like to go, but I can't.
I actually have expressed that I would like to go.
Okay, good.
Learned a lot last time I went, and I look forward to doing so as well.
You emailed it to us. It's not actually attached in here. Like, I printed the whole packet, but I don't, I can't find it. That's because it put a link to it, which doesn't generate in your project packet. You have to click on the link to see it.
We'll register you for both of you for the first day.
Yep.
The second day is also just a CCM board meeting.
No, thank you. Not on the CCM board, so we're good here.
Marijuana and then the board meeting.
Yeah, and the board meeting.
Wait, wait, wait. First day, enjoy marijuana.
Sorry, you're thinking.
It helps them with the view.
So they are bringing together, and it's unfortunate the way they split this up, but they are bringing in the National Panel on the ramifications of legalizing marijuana. What experiences, like they're bringing in somebody from Colorado to talk about what they hidden. It's not just the money that you're generating. What's the public impact?
In the weeds.
So and then at CCM, they're also going to be talking about a property tax program that they've hired three consultants to work on, a plan to reduce property taxes statewide by 25%, which means to do that, revenues have to come from somewhere else. And part of the solution, long-term, they got to address pension issues because--
Oh, no, this is going to be revenue neutral decision, right?
It could be. You know, it could be revenue neutral to--
I wouldn't anticipate that.
To, well, to the state taxpayers as a whole, but to whom, you know, revenue has to come from somewhere or unless you're able to reduce your expenses dramatically. And they're talking about some ways to do that, but some alternative revenues that they're-- So it's a next step building on the report is this is something completely different report where they looked at alternate revenue sources. But I've warned them that don't count on just getting that pledge of reducing or reality of reducing property taxes by over 25% without also getting spending restrictions. Because, you know, you can't have flexibility to just next day increase and back up.
Then they're not going to take the motor vehicle money to the state and go that way, which would offset the savings on property taxes.
So they're still working on a plan, but they brought in some national consultants from, I worked on the Connecticut Tax Panel from Georgia Tech and a group out of Massachusetts. And also a not-for-profit pension advisory group that's looking at state pension plans and then change something to happen with the state pensions going forward at least.
All right. Next item is 6F7 crumbling concrete foundation form recap.
So there's an interesting form in Eletip a couple of weeks ago. This is the information on that. And just the other tidbit that we are saying is the state, couple of them all, for given is also now operational, where people have non-reimbursed expenses for things that are not covered, like decks, which is--
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks. A lot. But it's a very low-interest loan that can help people pull the whole package.
Septic connections.
Everything else.
Utility.
Septic utilities. I've also, just move along, included the Human Services Department on the Adopt a Family and Holiday Food Program. Today is the deadline, but they'll certainly take things this week if people want to adopt a family for Christmas period or donate food for either Thanksgiving or Christmas. A couple of years ago, we made the change. You're not giving a family for food. We're allowing people to, you just donate food that you think's appropriate and we put it out and people kind of go like shopping. So they can, if they don't, not given green beans if they don't like your green beans. So they could kind of go shopping through and pick up what their family needs. So it's also a very personalized thing, and it was very much appreciated last year when we did it that way. Take money donations or--
Absolutely.
Gift cards.
Gift card.
They also started to do the bell ringing setups.
Through Human Services.
Through Human Services. And just some corporate places are restricting billing for different reasons. One of the customers that complained to, some don't like the philosophical bent behind Salvation Army. But again, most, 90% of the money stays here, so they're not really part of Salvation Army. But Wicked Slice has his allowance during the year this year, and we believe that will be a very popular place, high traffic. Appreciative of them doing that.
John, on the Adopt a Family, it actually says it's through November 20th they're accepting collections. I think he said today was the last day.
Form I have says 18th, so.
I read it. This one says 18th.
No, I see.
So there's a conflict.
This week was fine. They'll take the donation, I'm sure.
Yes. Just Christmas in the Village is coming up. Just a reminder that it's a week later this year because otherwise it would have been right after Thanksgiving and thought it was a little too much. Want to give a shout out to our North Coventry Volunteer Park Department that took some of our surplus lights from when we had the big tree here and took our ladder truck and was down there on Sunday adding extra lights to the tree at the first church.
I saw them doing that, yep.
They were there for a couple, three or four hours. So we're excited that we're able to get rid of some stuff, like the bags and make it go to a good cause that would be a community event. This year, the Lions Club is really active and they will have Ms. Candy's studio do the light or not, but they did say if the council wants to make any announcements there or presentation or speech, they'll all look us into the schedule. But so it's really up to you if you want to have a council representative there. It was a council event, we kind of let it go to the community for a couple of reasons. It's always a little awkward for us to have a Christmas tree on our property. But it is a community event and it's probably more appropriate that they kind of moderate it down there. And we'll still have Santa's sleigh, which is less, little less of a thing.
And next, we have a paper about Certified Youth Sports Administrator. There's going to be a class on Wednesday, March 18th, 2020, at our Millbrook Place. Who do people reach out to sign up for that, John?
This is really for rec, more for rec programs. And we are the first state certified community in Connecticut. And now we're being asked to share our experiences and help host this type of things. But obviously, youth sports has had a lot of issues that they need to address, both safety and sideline behavior, coaching behavior. And this is kind of what's going on. So we're pleased to be the host of it and we'll do people from Connecticut and--
So is the website the only place to sign up?
Yeah. So it's through--
Connecticut Recreation and Parks Association.
Yeah.
So it's CRPA.com if anybody can't see it.
How many seats are in Millbrook Place or something?
We could fit about 65 people there. And just a little footnote, at long last, we finally have internet there.
Oh, great.
Took us a while to get it through the conduit. I had to drill through the wall. But it's there now.
Okay. Very good. John, you had asked to have 6F11 Coventry Winter Farmers Market removed for discussion.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say, Sunday is 11 to 2 of the high school cafeteria and hallway. There's more than just food there. I think it's something that is a great thing to continue that fine farmers market tradition in Coventry through the winter. Just want to bring it to people's attention. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. We have no unfinished business yet.
Relish the moment, right?
Under new business, 8A, 19/20-26, review of current and pending town projects. You had a folder in front of you tonight, and John handed out the same handout. So you have it in two forms, horizontal, vertical.
So the vertical one allows you to take notes. I've asked the manager to come up to the table because we have a lot going on. And before you got into goal-setting, I thought I'd try to give you an update of all that's on our plate right now. And this is very informal, so it's okay to interrupt me and ask questions as we go forward. I gave it out so you have to get in.
It came with this piece of paper.
This is the one he gave me.
Okay.
Oh, there's another?
There you go. I got three of them.
So...
He always think I read a lot or something.
So the purpose, my purpose is to get you familiarized with the current projects, to allow some input into priorities set as we go forward because there are some things that are carried over. It may no longer be a priority for you or some things that are not, are not on here would become a priority. Need to look at resource allocation and project needs. We are, again, I would say, if you talk to our staff, we are really at a high stress level trying to keep up with these projects and you'll see as we go through lives. So we don't have a lot of other resources available to allocate to new projects. So there's a couple of ways to do that. You contract out for services, you add more staff, or you cut out, cut some projects, out or delay projects, and there may be even more. So what are the future budget indications of these projects? And one of the primary purposes, I probably should've put it on top, is to assist the council of saying. So I've broken the discussions into these various topical areas, the kind of public works, which are going to focus on roads, bridges, bonding, some personnel issues, buildings and facilities, administrative things that really are going to come under a lot of review or start usually with the steering committee, ordinances, policies, plating, zoning, economic development, what's going on with them, public safety issues, so police fire, emergency management, kind of general government to catch all category, wrecked parks, and then some other things and some events that you should be aware of. So public works, I could probably spend an hour and a half on this and won't. But we have a lot of grant projects coming. We have the Swamp Road Intersection Aliment Project, which is at the public information stage. At that meeting, there's gonna be some earnest discussion about what we do in North Fields Road. We told them, we had one other public involvement meeting before, we told them we didn't do design. The design says for us to proceed ahead with doing a link between the current North Fields and the new Swamp Road, that we would need a sightline exception on 44 for cars that are coming down 44, turning onto, turning onto, coming from Fumble, turning onto the new Swamp Road, and a car exiting that theoretically, you could be turning out of the, out of the North Fields connector and a car robbing this corner when it's some outrageous speed and have an accident. You have that same issue with the existing North Fields Road in reality. So our local traffic authority could document that this is actually a betterment from the existing condition, but we can't meet the existing engineering standards, partly because the roads are just built too close. So we need to talk about that and the implications of that connector. Last time we talked about it, some wanted to do nothing as the solution. That road traffic is gonna get worse to the point where there's gonna just be more accidents of people jumping to go out. The grant would cover the left, right-hand turn out only, no left-hand turn in or out. And some people didn't like that because they would have to go up to Forge Road. So half the time it would be a change and half the time you have to go take the new connector, new road all the way to Forge Road and come back. So we'll have that discussion, but ultimately, it's not gonna be just a vote. It's gonna have to be a kind of a policy decision and a long-term decision. But our engineer says the status quo is really not a good option because it's just gonna get worse and we'd have no more accidents. Bridges, so, I'm sorry, we also then have the South Street project, which is reconstruction section of South Street from, kind of from the homestead where the road has really failed. And we'll just add, while it's there, we'll be putting an appropriate sidewalk from the roundabout to basically the strong point of the zoo. That project is really slow. We've done all our responses to Connecticut DOT, we're waiting for them to go ahead. At that point, then we have to hire a designer to design it. My guess is at this point, that will be a late summer, fall project versus we're hoping it was gonna be a spring project, we just don't see it hit in spring. And coming up in March of this year, they're gonna open up the next round of applications for Losip grants. Todd Penny, our engineer, is on that Transportation Committee of CROG, so you get the inside information, get people on your right committees. Our recommendation at, we don't need to make that decision right now, but as part of goal sessions, staff recommendation is that we go back to South Street and look at the squiggles in the intersection with Swamp Road where there's zero sightline. And I urge you kind of, thank you for a goal session, to go look at that. We had a stop sign, people go through it all the time, but we have so many accidents on the, going down the curves. We had $225,000 of money when we were with Winkcock and when they transferred us to Caparica Council of Governments, we lost that money. So I've told them that we're expected to be made whole, so I think we're gonna, and this pot of money would be a lot more, so we could do a bigger project, which would actually include kind of do some sightline carving back, which will allow us to be a little more aggressive in those curves. We're only able to kind of do modest curve changes, but we could actually acquire land here for slope rights. And also probably close off Swamp Road Extension, which is a very deep decline down and just, you know, make, that's a driveway, you know, we don't need it anymore. And maybe then also look at a couple other issues on Swamp Road. There's a vertical dip that we could maybe carve off as part of this. So the maximum grant's like 3 million. Again, lots of grants, it's 100% grant, but it's paid for the engineer. So I would like to get moving fairly soon to get an application started to look at so we can kind of see what the options are. We would go with Jacobson Engineering because they did the original work, they already have a lot of survey work for the original application, and they're very knowledgeable in the Lots of program they did, the Jones Crossing.
If we applied for these particular, are we cutting out any others that might be considered?
That's the discussion we'll have to have in more earnest. Not every road is eligible for Lots of, it has to be an urban road. So Swamp Road, South Street, and we just, in anticipation of keeping our options open, I was able to work to get Daly Road reclassified. That's huge. But Daly Road, there's a couple things that we want to do there, but we put on rubberized chip seal, which has like a seven or eight-year life. So we are planning to kind of prioritize that as a future project. So we made that choice by putting a higher grade chip seal in to make it last until we can reconstruct the big sections of it. But Daly Road, kind of right this end of it, there's a little curve and a kind of a cliff that we need to cut back. And then the intersection, a couple intersections of Lake Road and Millwood Road, we need to try to make sightline better by lowering and raising. So it's a road profile, it's gonna be the best we can get without, you know...
Taking out homes.
So that is the other one that rises higher to level. And then there's other sections of South Street that we could look at. But there's not a lot of roads that we have.
And you can't put in for several projects and only get awarded some?
You could do smaller projects. They, there's a, I think a $300,000 minimum because of the amount of process.
And there's also staff time too on that, trying to suggest that you get unlimited staff time or anything.
But we were able to get two in one year. That equaled that 3 million cap, so we kept breaking things up. So not in the world that the South Street project, I think, could easily become a fairly expensive project if we do it right. And we don't want to make it a raceway, but it already is and we already have, you know, it seems like every other week now we're pulling a car off the curb and I don't lie.
No, that's where my wife's had their accident.
Yeah, that's dangerous stuff. Bridges, Polly Lane, we're in the final stages of design for that. Last WCC meeting, Local Emergency Coordinating Committee, they asked us to try to add a dry hydrant, so we'll at least figure out where. It may not be project eligible, but we want to at least make sure that this project allows for it to be added. Hop River Road Bridge, the state is gonna be doing the design for that. That's, so Polly Lane is probably this summer. Hop River Road is probably two summers away. Hop River Trail, and I'll just keep saying this over and over again, this is a state project to replace a bike bridge. We have no involvement in it except maybe letting them use a piece of our land for their trailer. But it's an amazingly expensive project because it's removing abutments from the river and actually doing some fish ponding where the culverts were to promote the fish life, but it could easily be a $4 million project. Paid for by the state.
State again, John.
Who's paying for that? I'm sorry?
The state?
So I like the idea of having trail connectivity. I'm not so sure what we have along the road would be adequate. Frankly, keep it on the road and then replace our bridge with a bike lane on it, which would be less of a span because it cuts directly across versus diagonally across. And that bridge needs to happen too, but they didn't want to consider, they want it on the trail. And I get it, but culverts. I've mentioned to you that we have a culvert that's fairly on Broadway. It seems to be a little bit stabilized right now.
Where is that one, John?
Right as you head down towards North River, right kind of near those ponds that the businesses have. And a section of it, probably 10 feet long of the bottom, it kind of just sunk and had the road went down and it kind of caved over a little bit. It needs to be replaced and it's gonna be a very expensive project because the water continuously flows through that. So it's a de-watering project, it'll be expensive and there's no good place to do it. So we're looking at alternatives, whether we can somehow slip line it. It seems to be, it's not getting worse right now, but it's something we're gonna have to address over the next several years. We've got a couple of projects, culverts done on Stage Road. We had tried to get the state to accept it while they're doing their project. They would buy it. I'm not so sure there isn't a way that we could shorten Stage Road to avoid that culvert. Just go through the town green and have a standard intersection. There's other ways of closing it and having Stage Road become a cul-de-sac. I think there's a lot of people that, until there are traffic lights, until there are traffic lights coming out of Highland Park, they use that as a roundabout because sometimes during rush hour, you just can't cross traffic. So they take a right and go right there and come back. Parker Bridge and South Street near Willow Glen and also in Buckle Hill, we have culverts, all that, and those are in our apple approval program. So we may be able to squeak one of them out right now. And I want to give them, at some point, a bond project status report. We're about a third of the way through spending. North Fields will be the big ticket and we're starting to change work and we're hoping this summer we'll be able to go up and chew the roads up and put them, regrade them and put it back down. So we said it was gonna be a three-year project and we believe that we're on track for that. Tree removal.
Say that one again. That's one of my pet things. I think we need to focus on that in the budget, so I'll just...
Oh, okay. We really, well, the bond project is really, really helpful for us, but it's also what's causing us to be a little overloaded. And we are using contractors we can, but there's just much more work when you're spreading it around trying to do it in a wise manner. Tree removal, you're gonna just keep hearing this from everybody. We hire a tree crew, it's 1,500 to 1,800 a day. Depending, you know, we had to take down a tree over in High Street that was $4,000 just for that tree. It was a really tall crane. We didn't want it to fall on the house.
Half your money for the year is gone already. It's October 31st. We've exhausted the amount that was in the operating budget and we put an additional 25 in capital. I think we have some Losip we might be able to dip into for trees and trails, but a third of the way through the year, our tree is gone.
We did put money on Losip for trees and of course, that's not released yet. So you see it from everybody, this is, you know, CCM has asked the state to declare it a state of emergency because of gypsy moths and the ash bor, emerald ash bor. It's a severe problem and it's gonna become a crisis, really a crisis with the next two summers. That's where the emerald ash bor impacts are gonna really, they're there already. They just haven't totally killed the tree, but give it another year and a half. Our CIP, I think as part of the, this year, we have a truck, we got the $50,000 check for, do an earlier replacement to the energy fund, Mark Kiefer is applying for another one for next year. Roadside mower, we're getting ready to order if we didn't order it today. We're trying a slightly different mower than the typical roadside mower. Typical roadside mower has this big far-reaching thing.
Articulating arm type of thing.
This one doesn't go out as far and it's more of an arch and that comes out and the mower rides back and forth on a steel beam. So it doesn't have as long a reach, but it could come in and back and forth.
Reversal going around.
So it, you could trip closer, especially on the other side of the guardrails and so forth. So Mark Kiefer have gone up to Upper State New York to see the demonstration of it and they could double the, double the time for productivity. Our staff is, our workers are not escadments, but Upper State New York, they just, they're buying them and they like, it's called the Tiger, Wildcat, I'm sorry, it's called Wildcat. So we could, you know, show you a video on it. It's also a little less funny.
Let's put that in the post column, will you?
But the real issue is, we think we could do it faster now. The reality is, we will have about a 12-foot reach and the existing one can go 16 to 18 feet, but we don't do 16 to 18 feet. We used, we did for a couple of years with Walter Vissenuk as a public works director and we just couldn't keep it up. So right now, typically, we're doing one sweep, you know, one, one kind of lane and that's all we can do. So there'll be a couple of spots where we may have some issues, but overall, we think that this will be a better, more productive and very clean and just, the mower can accept different heads and we're, so we'd be buying two types of heads and there's about an hour change over the heads. The other ones could do it, but it's about a day and a half change. So there's a lot of productivity here. And so we could actually, if we could get down to fine mowing, it can add a fine mowing head. So we're giving it a try. We believe that it's the right decision. I spent some time, myself, and drive around town and looking about what type of reaches we may not be able to get. And I really didn't find any. I'm sure there will be some, but in some cases, we're gonna use some handwork.
You said something about a fine mowing head. Is there also like a flail head or whatever? That's the main one?
That's the one we'll be using.
Okay.
There's also a brush, brush hog.
Oh, okay.
So then we're getting a brush hog and a flail. Fine mowing.
That makes sense, yeah.
Brush hog can go on trails?
It could, yes.
I think I heard somebody I know talking about wanting one of those for the trails.
We have an attached, yeah, we have a, we have, actually, it's like a, it's our Tool Cat, which is like a Bobcat except it's not big, tall, in all cage. It looks like a John Deere kind of utility vehicle, but it has all hydraulic attachment. Take all our Bobcat attachments and we have a mower for that, and that's what they did with the skull, brush clearing. So, but it goes off the back of the, of that little trailer.
Is that thing called Tool Cat?
Yeah, it's the coolest thing, I tell you. At the Board of Ed, in today's paper, somebody, or actually, I'm sorry, it's in the Facebook world, they, somebody was saying, well, why is the Board of Ed wants snow removing equipment? The Tool Cat is what we do our sidewalks with and the Board of Ed wants one for their sidewalks and I will support it if they'll take care of sidewalks out front here because we can't necessarily get, get to them on a timely basis. So there might be some margins, but they're not cheap, but they're very versatile for lots of other, other things and it's one of the best things that we've bought because it just does everything. And radios, police radios are almost done. There's a couple of little fine tunings and putting one in my car. I miss having police contacts in my car and that's coming, that was part of the deal.
We're also transferring radios to the public works.
And then the public works will be joining the system. That's in our budget this year. We just didn't have time this summer to spend any staff time on that, so this winter we'll be working on. They're already approved by the state to be joining that, if they'll have a subsection, but the police and other works can talk to each other. We're still working through the best communication means between fire and police. Right now they can go through dispatch agencies and there's a couple of channels that they may be able to, to work, work on. So that's something still a work in progress. There's several options, they haven't decided what the best.
Is the coverage been advertised?
It's much better than we have and I haven't heard complaints, so. And it's, it seems to still be getting better as they add other radios along the state. So those are, there's other things that there's just capital, but those are the big, big ones that our public works are about to talk about. Transfer station, scale's operational. We still have some, for some reason, some concrete blocks that are crumbling, go figure. So if we stay there, we're going to have to do some repairs and that kind of ties in also with what's happening with softball. So just put it on hold for now until we look at softball in that scale as relocatable. Road saw concerns, we now have one household that we're buying water for, well, it's being investigated. We have another one that they're meeting tomorrow with, start level, so we're a little bit more suspicious about that, but we're, we're bringing anchor engineering in to be with DEP on that, to see whether we can not give those, that household water. With DEP, you're guilty until you prove yourself innocent. So this is a statewide issue that is.
Blowing.
And we have a very conservative salt policy compared to some other towns. We do adjust our sanders a lot. We have policies, we check tonnage for how much goes down per storm and per road map. So we have some quality control issues to make sure they're not over, overusing that. So we have been sensitive, we have a rig policy on it, but it is a statewide issue that a lot of wells are getting higher salt content. Some houses all have home water softeners that if they dump those in their backyard, they could be polluting their own wells. Others may be running sanding business, sanding and snowfleing businesses and where they're partnered, their own trucks may have issues. I'm not dismissing that, it's a legitimate concern that we have to be careful of and thinking about, but in the meantime, we may be providing water for people. Waste water treatment plant for our treatment plant. The state has not renewed our permit for, I don't know, maybe a decade.
They haven't reviewed it either, until now.
We pay them $500 bucks a year, it's automatically renewed without comment, but it's not really a renewal, I would say we're getting to it. So about a month and a half ago, for the first time, maybe because they're mad at us or something else, they came and did an inspection, just happened to be about while we were talking about the whole thing. We haven't heard the results of that, but it's, it's very likely that we're not going to meet the new standards that have come in after we got our original permit for phosphorus and nitrogen. And if they get up to pharmaceuticals, which the state hasn't adopted yet, nobody in the state will be able to treat pharmacies, don't flush your pills. So we're going to wait and see what, what that happens and at that point we'll have to enter into some negotiations with the state on whether we decide to connect to Willamette, which is a long water pipe, a lot of money and a lot of upfront million-dollar payment, or we have to do denitrification at our plant, which would also be a lot of money. There's a lot of, currently there's about a 40% coverage for grants for that, but this will be a big ticket item.
This is stuff that just never goes away. We were talking about this.
That's what I was going to say, but why hasn't there been planning? I mean, this is not new. It's not new that our wastewater treatment plant is not, I mean, it hasn't been up to standards or met anything for more than a decade and we're just, we've just been on borrowed time.
We have a plan.
Well, maybe we need to start moving.
Well.
I mean, I know it's a big investment, but it seems like we need to be a little more proactive at this point. Well, we're really being reactive at this point, but proactively reactive. It's not a new situation. And eventually it's going to be limiting us in terms of what we can do in our village and in terms of economic development.
Well.
No?
There's no guarantee that we're going to be able to increase capacity.
Unless we hook up to Willamette.
Not even that. There's pipe capacity issues in Willamette. We might have to replace pipes going through Willamette.
Well, last time I was part of one of these conversations, it was lots of Willamette capacity, but it's been.
The plant, not the pipes.
Okay.
So.
I just think it's a little, this is generally the hard part to be moaning and groaning about deep when we know we've been out of, I guess this is going on record. I mean, we've known this is an issue for a long time. We probably should take some steps.
And we have a study, but they, we have no guidance from it. So if we started spending money and they changed the rules, then you're in real trouble. That's why we're not doing it. Capacity is an issue down there. So we have limits to what we can do. At some point you have to decide, how much is that capacity worth? I mean, there are alternative types of systems like community, you know, modern community septic systems that may be a better alternative than concentrating waste. Solution to pollution is dilution. Once you concentrate it in a treatment plant, it is harder to treat than spreading it out and treating it locally. Old Seabrook was under DEP order to install a centralized sewer system. They went to court and they came up with alternative systems and DEP ultimately won. DEP got the solution done without having a treatment plant. So they complied with the regulations by decentralizing. So there are alternatives that need to be looked at and centralized treatment plants are not necessary the way to go anymore. And as technology has improved, denitrification alternatives have, have increased dramatically. So had we done something.
What does that mean?
Take, take the nitrogen out. Nitrogen, sewage has a high nitrogen level, nitrogen is not good for the rivers.
Okay.
So we, our plant is really good at getting the bacteriological things, so what comes out, you're not going to get sick from, there's no, you know, organics, but there's phosphorus and nitrogen, are two things because we don't have enough dilution. If we had more land, that the groundwater itself could kind of, kind of do that, but we don't know. You know, so there's other solutions, we could buy more land. So there's lots of options to comply, but we don't know what standard they're going to apply to us because frankly, our, and I've said this before and I'll say it again, our plant is unique. There's only one other like it in New England that worked out in Spass. We're, we're a very unique plant. The only one that, the other one in Connecticut and only one or two that in New England has groundwater discharge. We don't discharge directly into river because they wouldn't let us 35 years ago. Now they're talking about discharging into Willamette River and I oppose that because I don't think they've seen that river in August. There is no flow. So, you know, I guess I have some concerns, but they sent a college intern out to tell us what to do. And then the crosswalk lane, which is in process. Personnel, so we're finalizing teacher's contract. I expected it to come over today, did not. The Board of Ed approved the teacher's contract on Thursday. Just for everyone, once it comes here, the council has a certain number of days, I believe, I have to look it up every time, but I believe it's 30 days to either ratify it.
Do nothing.
Do nothing, in which case after 30 days it goes into effect, or decline it, in which case the town might be responsible for the binding arbitration expenses. I haven't seen the contract at all, so I can't, can't give you any judgment on it, but I know that they approved it on Thursday night. And Carolyn, Eric Paulus, you may want to buy your back end because she was the person that sat through the negotiations if you have questions. We also, on the town side, we're finishing up the police and public works contracts. Police, we're just waiting for the union rep to sign it, the union staff person's all set with it and the public works contract, we've signed it, given it over and there's.
We're giving it over on Wednesday, or until last week.
Okay.
Unfortunately.
So the town has two other ASP units, the Town Hall Supervisors Union and had the pleasure of renegotiating the, renegotiating the ASP pension for nine unions. Last time that took probably about a hundred hours of my time because I have state law, I have to negotiate for all the Board of Ed employees for pension. So, finish personal roles, the appendices, we got the personal roles done through the last council. There's a number of appendixes that we need some staff time to get that, but that would go through steering and the council will. Just to let you know, we started our contract at Weatherland Services two weeks ago, hired North Central Conservation Services, so we have personnel, 10 hours a week or so in an effort to try to free up some of our county engineers' time for some of the other projects that are going on.
That will have budget implications in this current budget if we choose to stay with that service because we only had nine months out of the year in the prior year budget. So if we decide to keep that, that will be an increase in the budget going forward, but it is going to be a significant help for our town engineer.
And that hourly rate's less than hiring outside engineer help. So Promotional Public Works Maintainer Two, we had deferred that while we're in negotiations. It's in the budget, but we'll run a process to provide one person so that we'll have a little more CDL truck driver to drive the big, big trucks and that will have to pay the $2.
That's what it's just going to have.
Differential. So it's still a net increase slightly, but it's more predictability. We used to actually have more as they retired, we now we bring them in as a truck driver and Public Works Maintainer Two, so that was in this year's budget. We've got a couple of part-time openings. We need a council clerk because we're sad at, at part-time recreation assistant who took a full-time job.
Senior superintendent.
Yeah, senior, sorry, is that right? Couple of new laws that we have to work on, minimum wage is coming, that's going to have an impact especially to our rec programs and even register our voters, staff and library salaries and so, we're going to see.
Life cards, is that what you said?
Life cards. Summer camp will be the biggest impact. Summer camp prices will have to go up because the wages are going to have to go up. So people aren't going to like that, but those are things outside our control. We also, and I mentioned, Amanda's been able to line up some free sexual harassment training, but they passed a law that every employee has to be trained in what sexual harassment is and how to, how to avoid it and not do it.
We have one year to train all of our current employees and then if you hire anyone newly of six months to complete the training. So we're holding some in January, we're going to do it again in June, all our parks and rec kids come back onboard.
So her mind is doing that for us at no cost.
Question, does the family leave impact anybody in town? Just because it's so broad, you know, the way they, they describe it is different than a normal family leave.
We are already covered by family leave.
Right, but is it, is it as?
No, that's paid, that is true.
Yes.
I don't believe it affects us at all.
It doesn't affect us at all? Okay, good.
Probably because we give paid leave anyway, so we would always make people take, actually a lot of the run out sick leave and so forth.
I just maybe thought the description of what constitutes, you know, leave.
We're going to change slightly, we don't have too many employees who tend to try to abuse that in any way, shape or form, we have historically not had.
I wasn't suggesting they were abusing it.
No, no, I'm just saying that people only use it for, for well-intentioned reasons, so I don't think that a lot of them.
So Amanda's office is also running through a health savings account, open enrollments?
Open enrollment for the town, everyone in the town. However, the police and public works unions are switching to plans entirely, it's not just January, January 1st, we're doing full enrollments for them, they have to resolve if people can't pick one of the new plans, either the higher level deductible health savings account deductible plan or our new $30 copay PPO.
And our consultant has been running some workshops.
Yes, she was out two times last week, she did town hall twice and then she also went to Public Works and will be over at police anti in the second half of Public Works because they got tied up out right in the middle of the road this week. Priorities, so. Everyone's been really excited about the sessions. Our new consultant for USI, we're happy to have her onboard, she's been very useful in providing information.
So USI is, we went out to rebid for benefit consultants, stayed with USI.
Sadly.
Partly because they were the lowest price, but they brought a new person on, they weren't happy and the new person is working out rather well and generating excitement of our employees that just didn't really understand the tax benefits of the health savings account.
Well, that the town contributing 75% of your digital, it's like a really big deal.
Yeah.
So we're explaining it better and.
Plus it carries over and it can build.
Right.
And you can put it at additional.
So they use this as a retirement to pay Medicare supplement?
Yes, they're very, they're getting very excited, so that's been good.
Why don't you go on to what ECHIP is and what your role is?
ECHIP is our Eastern Connecticut Health Insurance Project. It's a collaborative of five different entities. Every entity has a representative from the town and Board of Ed side. I serve as the town's representative for the town of Coventry. I currently also serve as the vice president. There's been a lot of turnover, so after two and a half years I have that level of security on that floor. We have had really amazing luck with ECHIP. We've been able to keep our health insurance rate either flat, we had two years, three years ago we had a decrease of 7%, last year we had an increase of 3%. When you compare that to some of the trends state and nationwide, we had a really an amazing, amazing results of that. ECHIP has their own broker, so it's nice. We have USI who's supposed to be comparing that and working through, we get to determine our own rates and. We get to determine our own rates and at our plan, our insurance pool fund is very well-funded at this moment, has over $3 million in it, which is a healthy amount to have in there given our total claims. So, we've had very good luck. We've pulled together for loss prevention. We've pulled together for our employee assistance program. We've gotten that paid through our Cigna Wellness Dollars. It's been a very successful program.
Building and facilities, we've got a lot of committees. We have the Building Energy Efficiency Committee. They have done a lot of projects on the boilers and burners and oil tanks. The, what's left is asbestos removal, which is working its way through school, the cafeteria, through the state board education. And the unifedalators, which is sitting on my desk along with two other RFPs to get out to hire an engineer to design, build that for review by the building committee. And the fire doors, which just keeps coming around. We believe now that everyone's in agreement that if there is a code violation, Philtrinelli needs to get it back to the Board of Ed, to the state board education. So, they'll fund their 52% of it. Microgrid co-gen and solar virtual net metering. We're in the queue, a waiting list for the virtual net metering for the two systems over here. The system that we go over at the Board of Ed will stay at the housing authority would stay, the housing authority will get transferred. But virtual net metering, the power goes into the grid and comes up at the meter that you want so that you're generating it in one spot and they're using it somewhere else. There are some real economic benefits to that. And if we get that and the microgrid, we will be very close to being off-grid for all the town and school buildings. So, it's just going to be an amazing accomplishment. A lot of players involved, but I've got to give kudos to Board of Ed for keeping pursuit. And if for some reason the microgrid project kind of falls the wayside, we've got solar as a backup. So.
We still have natural gas and generators at least.
Yeah, the natural gas is, still save a lot of money on that. It's a cleaner fuel than the coal. So, the library building committee is, you know, working along. The government planning and zoning commission does, they're directed to by the council. The planning and zoning commission is going to make a determination on what type of parking needs they may need at the first meeting of December. Looks like they may want eight more parking spots because the community room size is slightly bigger. That could fit along the back area that people use already as oval parkage. And they were going to be on the well and commission meeting for this Wednesday. I pushed them back just because I'd rather have well and see it after that. We've been exploring and got our sewer camera up, the drains from the courtyard. They found some material on there. He was able to get past that. And there's a substantial drainage system. I just couldn't tell whether the robot turned left or right. So, we actually have to go and get the structure of some branches and some other things that probably went through the drains, flowed the drains of the courtyard. We've got to get that letter out and then we'll be able to see what direction it turns. But we believe that the drainage goes back through the parking lot and heads towards the back wall because we know the camera was able to go 190 feet. So, I'm waiting for some information from the contractor that built the building, Zlatnik, which Deb Walsh, the chairman of that committee, reached out to and they said, yeah, I've got a file on that, let me look. So, we'll see.
How many years, 32 years ago?
Yeah. And the library did find a bunch of pictures, but none that showed exactly that scene. So, you know, at some point, they're doing what the last council told it to do, and at some point you'll have to decide probably through goal setting where we are on that. I don't need to talk more about it tonight unless you want to, but I think that's kind of a goal set issue. You know, you may want to bring it back in when you're ready. Softball committee is another, another one of the RFPs that's sitting on my counter, my desk corner waiting for me to be able to have time to write it. While anchor engineering was out looking at the, to finalize the methane treatment, they're going to prepare, the kind of concept for softball is there because they already have all the greens and everything else. But we want to go through a four consecutive process for the other ones, but I've not yet heard from Phil Dizziato. So, until, I don't want to write our RP to include him if he's done what to do. So, I have to make some passion, make a few phone calls. So, softball committee meets this Thursday. I just gave them an update that anchors that something, the, whether we have a spot to relocate or transfer station, that also depends on looking at the pits. And Dizziato, so it'll kind of like, we've got things in motion, but there's a lot of interplay with things. Water study committee has been in a number of years. Board of Ed did appoint a new member to that. I am meeting probably on a quarterly basis with Connecticut Water to keep talking about various issues. They will be getting the supply up and running. That will get the capacity issues that we've had in the village resolved. So, they're building a modest filtration system on Old Eagle Road. And then they can turn that water on, but the supply there is abundant. So, long-term, we're working on trying to figure out how to get that water to the other side of the lake where they're trucking in water during the summer. Of course, it would have been nicer if we did it before, where you could sort of lay it across the street, but that never happens, right? But, and maybe relocate the water tower from up here to a lower level that could serve as the pressure booster to get it to the other side of the lake. And then that could also then feed the hydrants. So, there's a grant round coming up through the drinking water group and they're trying to free up some of their engineering time to put together an application for that. So, we're following through. So, not saying we're abandoning the idea of up here, but one of the reasons up here was to drive our sprinkler system.
Just didn't want you to confuse people. You said relocate it like it was already there. You just meant relocate the proposed water.
But we had a plan to install a water tower out here by the football field. But the system in the high school would still need the pumps because it's a high-pressure sprinkler system unless we changed all the heads. You know, we could add sprinklers from this to the middle school. But the water system that we have up here is still functioning well. It's only about 10 years old or so. And Orchard Hills was not enthused, I guess is-
Really?
Is the way to say it, even though you have lead in the water now, right? In the front units.
There were concerns, right? I don't want you to leave it on the record as that there is.
There is lead in water. They're under order to supply some drinking water for the front units. And that's not a comment, just, you know, if you test your house, if your house was built more than 40 years ago, you probably have lead in the water. And the solution is-
Run the water.
Turn the water on for about three or four seconds and you're fine. Or install all sorts of reverse osmosis systems that are very expensive or replace all the plumbing. A lot of schools are freaking out at doing that and it's like really overkill. It just hits, you know, it's like, the water is safe. And most people, you know, think about your own habits when you turn on water. You typically, you'd like test the temperature. You know, by the time you've tested the temperature, it's fine. So, the back units are fine because they were built a little later, but anyway.
But it is a concern to the people that it's-
Yes, it's a legitimate concern. You know, change your habits a little bit, be aware of it. The real lead water, the lead issues are really childhoodile issues. So, that's the other thing, is the developing mine versus the flood hole mine. So, it's a serious issue. These levels are very low. But we do have a water study committee that may end up having to become more active if we look at kind of this broader interconnection. Senior Housing Options Committee. We've got another name in that will go into steering. So, they may actually be ready to be charged to start the committee.
That would be the fourth person. We need five for a quorum.
Five for a quorum? One more. Are we going through this whole package tonight? Try.
I'm feeling it. I'm feeling that.
I'm glad you asked that question. It could be divided over-
Yeah, we, you know, maybe, you know, all right. Although, I'll go really quick and see what we're getting. Flat hole dedication. We're almost done with that, so.
Sure.
And- Welcome to Conveniences. And I've talked a lot about this, but we were given a big sign that looks like a stone wall over the last council kind of saw pictures of it. We have letters now from the science manufacturer that came out of last fiscal year. So, when we, public works has time, they'll install sign at the intersection of 31 and 44. Ministry of Policy is in order. They were also, state will also have a couple of things to carry out. The burn and fire program ordinances, changes, requests about a fire marshal were kind of tabled. They need to look at it. There were concerns about how far it goes into kind of several employers and all those things. So, we need, we found a mistake in the rec ordinance, so we just have to change a number in it. And we shared with the last, it refers to a section that doesn't exist that we just need to change the number. But, and the state passed a law on fracking, which overrides ours. So, our town attorney recommends we repeal our fracking. It's not called fracking ordinance, but the reality is to repeal it as a regulation.
You describe a lot of ordinances that way.
So, as the fire merger goes forth, we will need to amend the fire and ENS ordinances in two sections to support the committee's recommendations. Over the years, people have talked about charter where that's something you want to talk about, but there's some structural issues in our charter, especially the time and the budget process and a few other things. There's financial costs to that. It's usually about $10,000 or so. So, it would really be important next year's budget if you want to look at it, but there's legal fees and advertising fees. Consortium dates, I think if we set dates soon for the year, it might be good. If you have topics that we can bring in, some people will talk about. Committee reviews. We have a couple somewhat not functional committees. Insurance committee hasn't been in years.
I actually went to steering already and we decided to dissolve it. It never went to the full council. I followed up on that, so it's still there.
We need an ordinance to abolish the insurance committee because they don't need.
Can I bring that to the next steering meeting? Get it up there in the next steering.
Veterans Memorial Commission has shrunk down to where they don't have a quorum, nobody's signing up. Formally, there's been some discussion about whether we should merge them with the Cemetery Commission because the Cemetery Commission is getting into a lot of those issues and some of the Vietnam memorials are in the cemetery. So, there might be something to pursue that.
Can we be able to increase the size of that million from five to seven and include the two people of veterans?
We did that when we merged arts into rec.
Thank you.
So, you would want to talk to probably both committees to see what their thoughts are. But if you give a charge to the Cemetery Commission, they will get that. Personnel Appeals Board, we just formally dissolved them with the adoption of personnel rules. The Personnel Appeals Board disappeared because it's the council's responsibility under the charter. So, we need to tell the people, there's maybe only one or two left in it, that they no longer exist. And the Energy Committee is also having real problems getting a form because we can't get people to be part of that. So, Jen Riley, the chairman of the Energy Committee, asked whether they should maybe be joined in with the Building Energy and Efficiency Committee because she intends that anyway. So, that would be something that Derek could talk about because it better have less, better functioning committees.
She's still holding Energy Committee meetings and all for, like for hours on end. Just the side of, and all of this where everyone is spending a lot of time on committees with no action.
And we have two kinds of, councils are doing two kinds of staff committees since this 2020 complete count. We're working with the library and some other town staff. We're going to be sending out reminders as the starts coming forward in February. Our clerk's office is dealing with, is pleased to promote the women's suffrage anniversary and actually has found an old ballot box that says women only. From our own history here in town.
Wow.
And talking about reaching out to Mrs. Bowen, maybe, who might have memories of her first vote here. So, because she just turned 100. So, this goes back before that, but she would remember at least, you know, her first vote.
Oh, sure.
When she hit 21, you know, so just some local things. So, a couple of things, stateable CT updates will be updating some of the data as we go through, but they have not announced these different goal yet, to build the goal. You can tell me when to stop. Stop. Takes a couple more votes than that. Plays on the economic development.
They'd be happy if you extend to the next meeting.
Yeah.
If you go and give her two more people to speak up.
I agree because I think it is very important.
So, they don't want to fluff them.
Let me just go with the last one, just to remind. Christmas in the Village, we'll have a joint finance crystal meeting for December 12th over at the Board of Ed meeting. Lees Across America Day is 12/14th. They're still taking donations for Lees and we're looking for holiday food gifts and belting out the good news. So, the rest, if you have it, we'll go.
Yeah, executive session will be two minutes.
Is that where we are?
Yes.
We don't want to discuss the sewer line cleanup.
I move this to town council into the executive session for some general statutes, 1260, discussion of the selection of a site or the lease, sale or purchase of real estate by a political subdivision of the state when publicity regarding such a site lease, sale, purchase or construction would cause a likelihood of an increased price until such time as all the property has been acquired and/or all proceedings or transactions concerning same event terminated or abandoned with the following people in tennis, who's going to stay? No. Some members of the town council, town manager and Amanda Backhouse to the director of finance.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're in the executive session.